Oh, do we have anybody here to?
Yeah, for Rosedale.
Rosedale's here.
Yeah.
Mister type one H.
You ready?
All right, it is nine oh one, it's time for our Tuesday morning business meeting and Mister Rosedale, would you like to do the invocation?
Sure.
Okay.
All right, dear heavenly father, thank you for today, thank you for the cool weather and the rain, the dampness helping to put out some of the fires. I pray that that will be very effective in slowing down and putting everything out. God, I pray for your peace over this county, that your peace would control and reign everywhere here. And we invite your holy spirit to be here and bring peace to this county in every aspect and Jesus.
Yeah. Follow me.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, I would entertain a motion. For the consent agenda.
Mister chairman, I moved. To adopt the order of agenda as presented.
On the agenda, it says public comment, are we scooping that?
Any public comment, anybody sign up to speak? Okay, go ahead, Mister Kramer.
Rick Kramer for the record, and I'd like to ask these Bradshaw and Oma to resign. You've called us bacteria, you threaten citizens and fellow commissioners. You don't represent me, I'm in your district, your values, your leadership, nothing that you do is a representative of me. You demonstrate poor leadership. You tout yourself as a Christian pastor, and I want to make it clear if there's any press.
Personal attacks, Mister Kramer.
There's any press people out here. This is not a represents representation of Christianity. Your actions and words call for your resignation or removal, the court has removed you from the county buildings with a one year restrain restraining order. And I'm asking you today to resign.
Well, I thank you for the invitation, I'll decline, thank you. Miss Kramer.
Morning Jennifer Kramer for the record, um, I'm going to address both commissioners, Bradshaw and Oma. Um, I'll start with Commissioner Bradshaw, I also request that you resign, I live obviously in District One. Unfortunately, you don't you don't represent me or District One. Uh, your viewpoints, attitude, decisions and values are not those of an elected official in a position where you are supposed to serve the citizens of Bonner County. And so I would ask that you would resign and then for Commissioner Oma. Uh, my comments relate to some statements that you made at last week's meeting on August twenty ninth. Um, you defended scheduling special meetings with just twenty four hours notice versus including them in the Tuesday business meeting. Um, as a savings to taxpayers because the county employees wouldn't have to sit through those agenda items. But that's merely an excuse, those agenda items. Can be put after the county employee items, which is how the agendas are already structured. In addition, your random recesses cost the county more money and are completely avoidable. Also, last week you read debate rules that were sent to you by Cornell Razor. I request that you read those to yourself in particular, pay attention to the two about being civil and refraining from attacking the member. I request that you also resign, you were not elected to be a ruler and you're not serving the citizens of Bonner County, thank you.
Thank you, Miss Kramer. Anybody else?
Dimitri Borusov for the record, um, I wrote something, I'm going to read it, it's with the new development with the possible mandate. Coming from the federal government and the state with to do with the COVID vaccines. So, um, I understand that in that in issue of possible federal and state COVID nineteen vaccine mandates is a significant importance to our community. And I would like to express my thoughts and concerns on this matter. Our community values the principles of local government, uh, which allow us to make decisions that best align with our unique needs and values. The possible mandates imposed by federal and state authorities related to COVID nineteen vaccines have understandably raised concerns among many residents, including myself. The right to make informed choices about our medical decisions, including vaccinations, is a fundamental aspect of our individual liberty. I believe that the right should be respected and upheld, especially in the face of mandates. That affect our personal health and well being, I kindly request that Bonner County takes the stance of non compliance with federal and state. Mandates concerning COVID nineteen vaccine requirements. This would demonstrate our commitment to safeguarding the rights of individuals to make informed choices regarding their own medical decisions. Including whether to receive COVID nineteen vaccines. I also request that the county remains vigilant in staying informed about the evolving scientific information, public health guidance. And considerations surrounding COVID nineteen vaccines, it is essential to continue. Uh, respecting the individual autonomy of our residents while making well informed decisions. Additionally, I request that the county communicates its stance to relevant federal and state authorities advocating for the recognition of local authority and the ability to tailor. Responses to the specific needs and preference of Bonner County. Lastly, I encourage the county to actively foster open dialogue, collaboration and community engagement on this matter. This will help ensure that decisions made reflect the best interest and values of Bonner County and its residents. I believe that by taking these steps, Bonner County can continue to be a place where personal freedoms and community well being are balanced effectively. I trust that you will consider these requests with utmost care and attention. And if you guys need by the next meeting, I can provide you some data from Pfizer tests and everything else, thank you.
Thank you, Dimitri, uh, in nineteen, I stood against the vaccine. That is each individual's right to decide if they want to go to the doctor and not want to go to the doctor, one of vaccine, not a vaccine. That is a God given right and a freedom in this country. And I did not support any infringement on that freedom then, and I do not now and my champ, my stamps will not change on that. I agree with you one hundred percent. Thank you. Uh, Teresa Heisner, can you hear us?
I can, good morning, can you hear me?
We can.
I just wanted to say Luke, this is for you, your comment on Facebook, your ghost Spartan comment was.
Stop you for just a second, no personal attacks, no derogatory statements, you may continue.
It's not, it's not a personal attack. I just want, I, I just wanted to say it was inappropriate considering they were too duly elective Christian conservatives. And it was a very contentious vindictive and deceptive recall, so I just thought it was inappropriate that you made the ghost Spartans comment, you guys should have stayed neutral. And I, and you guys, for the most part did, but Luke, you did not, my second comment is. Um, Asia is my representative for District Two, and I would really, really appreciate it if you guys allowed her to represent her constituents. Every time she, and I mean it, every time she suggests something, you guys just bully, you you bully her out. And it's not okay, you're not giving her an opportunity to represent her constituents, so please take that into consideration when you vote, thank you.
Thank you. Your hand's still up, Teresa. So, anybody else, hey? How's wine today?
For the record, my name is Wayne Martin, uh, I would request, ask if you would, uh, Commissioner Bradshaw. To consider having a town hall or multiple town halls for District One. I know the edge mere range, we could work something out to be able to have it there and there may be some other areas. Uh, to be able to do it so that we can talk about, consider items, things that are going on. Um, I know Asia has done that, I'm not sure if Luke has has done any of those for his area. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'd actually be open to that. So, anybody else? Okay. Adopt the order of agenda.
Mister Chairman, I moved to adopt the order of agenda as presented.
My second mission.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Hey. District One Commissioner report. Uh, nothing, I'm District One.
Yes, you are.
Trying to read at the same time, District Two, Ms. Williams.
All right, thank you for everybody who came and especially Ms. Diane, we cooked breakfast for everybody to give them a reason to come up. We learned a lot from justice services and I think one takeaway is that we have room within our community. To look at how we can impact you, uh, through mentoring, and so maybe if we can come together as a group. And maybe do some brainstorming on how we can positively impact. Um, that particular group of people we're seeing it rise in the need of services with a decrease in available people to provide those services from clinicians. To even, uh, if you're looking for a job, they're hired, um, so thank you to Rob for coming out, that was a wealth of information. Um, with actually an ability for us to actually participate in making a change in our local community. Um, next week's Commissioner chat is with EMS, um, Deputy Chief Allen and Captain Tyler Armstead will be here. Um, that's going to be an opportunity for us to kind of understand not just where we are, but where we might want to consider. Going at with questions from the community, so please, uh, make yourselves available for that. And then on the eighteenth will be our beloved coroner, if you have not heard him do stand up comedy, he is fantastic, he'll be here on eighteen. Our last one will be, uh, with me to kind of go over what we've discussed. I actually received an overwhelming number of emails from agencies and groups of people that would like to participate. Idaho Department of Water Resources does want to participate, so does DEQ with some other people suggesting some. Groups within our community that you might want to hear from, so I'm going to start scheduling the October, um, agenda. Uh, we do have planning and director who said that his team would participate on the seventeenth. Uh, but I want to just start filling the October, uh, Commissioner chat. The amount of impact that Commissioner Chad has had actually on agencies outside of just Bonner County has actually been. Heartwarming to see that people can click on those videos and they're learning about the departments and information that we otherwise wouldn't know. Um, so I definitely appreciate everybody who signed on to participate and those of you who keep it going by coming back. Um, so there's a lot of things, uh, happening in Bonner County, my focus is still going to be on the internal audit function. Um, I am still working on an audit with our risk manager regarding some of the ways in which we have our technology set up. Um, there does need to be an internal audit of, uh, what transpired with the fair, so I'm working that out as well. One of the biggest focuses for me, probably for the next four years is going to be, how do we make Bonner County more attractive for insurance? So we can do some reduction in that area. We are moving into a, a time in economy where it's not, we have to have insurance, but they don't have to sell it to you. So we're kind of changing to where we have to become more attractive and in order to mitigate that risk. We need to start doing a little bit more forward thinking, um, a little bit more planning and education and training within Bonner County. So that we can justify, um, people that want to actually insure us, I'll be working with our risk manager. On that, I did have a meeting with our broker on Friday to kind of go over a plan and they're going to be able to offer some education and training to. Some of the directors so that we can start, uh, changing the image of Bonner County, um, so does anybody have any questions for me with that? All right. Okay, well, thank you for, to everybody that did come and continues to come and keeping our Bonner County chats alive.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Oma.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. To begin with, here is a update on the fires and this is from Saturday, September second. And that is all fire restrictions have been lifted for the Panhandle National Forest. Well, campfires are no longer restricted, hunters and recreationists are urged to continue to use caution. Never leave a campfire unattended and make sure it is cold to touch before walking away. Uh, as of Sunday. The Ridge Creek Fire was over fifty percent contained at over four thousand four hundred and seventy four acres, but it sure feels. Like there was a switch that happened. Uh, today is the first day of school and to miss Heisner, I will never apologize for supporting our kids. I rode my bicycle to school with my daughter this morning and what I have to say is go Spartans, go Bulldogs, go Wampus Cats. And for those of you that are out there on the roads, please remember that those are our kids, pay attention to the school buses. Um, and I unequivocally stand by my support of public education. In reference to some of the information that was put out at last week, I would like to make some corrections to begin with. In regards to the city of Norwalk and White, that was presented by a Mister Borisov. There is actually a. It, it was presented in a manner that appeared to say that free speech would be upheld by it. What this, what the case Norwalk versus, uh, White actually said is that, and I'm reading from. The, uh, completed response, a more fundamental flaw in plaintiff's position. Is that their First Amendment's arguments do not take into account the nature of the process that this ordinance is designed to govern. We are not dealing with words uttered on the street to anyone who chooses or chances to listen. We are dealing with meetings of the Norwalk City Council and with speech that is addressed to that council. Principles that apply to random discourse may not be transferred without adjusted, without adjustment to this more structured situation. City council meetings like Norwalk where the public is afforded the opportunity to address the council are the focus of highly important individual and governmental interests. Citizens have an enormous First Amendment interest in directing speech about public issues to those who govern their city. It is doubtless partly for this reason that such meetings once opened have been regarded as public forums, albeit limited ones. On the other hand, a city council meeting is still just that, a governmental process with a governmental purpose. The council has an agenda to be addressed and dealt with. Public forum are not, the usual First Amendment antipathy to content oriented control of speech. Cannot be imported into the council chambers intact. In the first place, in dealing with agenda items, the council does not violate the First Amendment when it restricts public speakers to the subject of hand. While a speaker may not be stopped from speaking because the moderator disagrees with the viewpoint he is expressing. It may certainly stop him if his speech becomes irrelevant or repetitious. Similarly, the nature of a council meeting means that a speaker can become disruptive in ways that would not meet the test of actual breach of the peace. A speaker may disrupt a council's meeting by speaking too long, by being unduly repetitious. Or by extended discussion of irrelevancies. The meeting is disrupted because the council is prevented from accomplishing its business in a reasonably efficient manner. Indeed, such conduct may interfere with the rights of other speakers. So as a reminder, the purpose of our meeting today. Is according to one dash two hundred of Bonner County ordinance, the purpose of the regular business meeting is for the Board of County Commissioners. To conduct the business of Bonner County publicly. Regular business meetings do not constitute public hearings wherein the public has the right to be heard on every agendized item. Which brings me to a next point that was brought forward in regards to special meetings that was brought forward today. And I'm reading from Idaho statute. Again, I one hundred percent stand by not wanting to waste taxpayer dollars in having a captive audience.
Hadn't had that much coffee.
So, going back to Idaho statute, which is under Title seventy four Transparent and Ethical Government, Chapter Two, Open Meeting Laws, Special Meetings. No special meeting shall be held without at least a twenty four hour meeting and agenda notice unless an emergency exists. So. How we have conducted ourselves and will continue to conduct ourselves is, is in complete comportment and alignment with Idaho statute. In regards to the Fair Board.
I'd like to ask a question here because you're saying that you're, uh, he, he's claiming that you guys are doing this purely for.
Pence.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. Let's stop you, let him finish his, uh, number two report.
Well, can we talk about it while it's, while it's still fresh in people's minds?
No.
No, so you don't, you don't want to, so he gets to say stuff.
Let him finish his report.
Can I, can I say?
No, you cannot until he finishes.
Something.
Cameron, will you, uh, show Mister Hutchins to the door and if you have a problem, Officer Riffle will assist you.
So he gets to say whatever he wants to say.
No.
And.
He gets to finish his report.
Nobody gets to.
I, so you're done. Thank you for coming in.
You're really going to throw me out of the meeting? For trying to ask a question.
I'm not. That man right back there will.
You're going to throw me out of the meeting. I'm asking, are you throwing me out of the meeting?
You're out of the meeting.
Trying to speak.
You're out. No, you're speaking out of order.
Okay.
I will give you an opportunity to speak when he finishes.
Okay, then I will, then I will talk.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
They're not tough rules, but they are rules. Go ahead, Commissioner Oma.
Thank you. Now, in regards to information that was presented. Regarding the dissolution of the Fair Board memorandum of understanding last week. Again, I completely stand by that information. What the Fair Board did is that they sent the county. Through their attorney. Uh, correspondence. And the correspondence alleged that the county was not in compliance with state statute. The challenge for us as a Board of Commissioners is that according to state statute. We, the Board of Commissioners is responsible for the hiring of an external agent. In order to assure the taxpayers and the residents of Bonner County that we are in compliance, we have done so for years. The, uh, fair statute is very clear and I will read from twenty two dash two zero four. The duties of a county fair board. The county fair board shall be charged with the care and custody of all property belonging to the county and used for fair purposes. And shall be responsible for all monies received by it raised by tax levy or levies for fair purposes. As well as all receipts from the operation of the fair and any other monies received from other sources for fair purposes. So it is the fair board who is responsible for said accounting of those funds. The Board of County Commissioners and the clerk are responsible for the funds that are managed by the county in accord with state statute. Those funds of the fair board are managed independently and they are managed by a separate board that is quasi independent. Of regular county operations as has been duly noted. And because of that, the Board of County Commissioners determine that in the interest of protecting the statutory obligations of this county. It was in the best interests for us to sever that agreement until we could have compliance. From the fair board as has been noted by the report that was done by the Office of the Prosecutor. Finally, uh. As I've been serving in this eight months and learning about all of the things that the county does. I went on a public administration visit with a member of the treasurer's office and coroner beers last week. I am constantly amazed at the things that small county government does, public administration. Is a responsibility of the treasurer's office to figure out what to do to dispose of. The remains of deceased who may or may not have relatives. So myself, coroner beers and, uh, a treasurer's representative traveled to a house. And while it was a tragic situation, to observe the death of people in isolation and et cetera. It is also heartwarming to know that local government has the ability and the capacity to be able to take care of those remains and to give some people. Some dignity and grace as they move into the next chapter of their lives. With that, thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, so cause consent agenda.
You thought it would be a lot of speed.
Okay, go ahead, Spence.
So.
Let me, let me warn you going into it.
If it becomes a personal attack, derogatory, then we're done. So I can't call them any of the, any of the, any of the, like the five forbidden words, I'm just kidding. So you're.
You know how to bet.
I, 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 I hope so. So you guys keep talking about this, or Luke keeps talking about the special meetings that you guys are having and how legitimate they are and how you guys aren't doing anything nefarious. Well, why these, these special meetings keep coming up on convenient topics that you don't want the public to comment about? I mean, it looks so obvious and Luke, you trying to tell people that that's not what you're doing. I mean, if you repeat the lie over and over again, that doesn't make it true, man. So you guys keep having these special meetings on topics you don't want the public to comment on, or you want to get something pushed through real quick and it keeps looking nefarious. And that's what you've been doing and you can deny it, but that's what you've been doing.
Mister Chairman, an opportunity to respond.
Go ahead.
Uh, I believe that my trial by the Bonner County Republican Central Committee has been scheduled in regards to rule twenty. Which I read with entertainment, Mister Hutchings, I will be in attendance. I will speak for myself and no, I will be not compelled by your speech.
So I want to.
No, 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 that was.
Steve, he, no.
He wanted, no. No. You spoke.
Silence in the public is not helping.
He rebutted and we're moving on to the next, we're moving on to the next item, Spencer.
You didn't rebut what I said, you went on a totally different subject.
Commissioner Bradshaw, if I may, please.
Yes, ma'am.
The, the MOU is something I think everybody should hear what took place, this wasn't a recommendation of legal counsel. And I see now that it looks like we're being sued. From within, so I understand the issue and the concern, um, it wasn't a recommendation. I think that even if you listen to the statute that was read. The way in which the board has behaved has been inconsistent with what the expectation that we're trying to place upon members of the fair board. Um, on one end, we say that they're in control of all of the land that is controlled by the fair, but yet we messed with an RV campground. There was an opportunity and a request on my end, since most of you weren't there. That instead of dissolving the memorandum of understanding that we take a step back. Have legal and the clerk's office work together to update the MOU to make sure that it was in compliance. With what the clerk's office needed before removing a memorandum of understanding that was likely not fully understood. We're talking about people that are volunteering on the board, there was a vote two to one to not make that move. I think that it is in our best interest to not force issues, but to actually be more transparent and open the door on this. This was not a recommendation of legal counsel, it was a concern brought forth by the clerk with counsel saying there's opportunity to improve. We didn't necessarily need to dissolve it, I do agree that. That topic reasonably could have been put here, this board has heard over and over again, uh, as the people come to this building, it would be better if we put. Reasonable items on this agenda that we know they want to hear about versus scheduling it out. Um, I would impress upon people not to just ask that of the Board of Commissioners because you've got other people that request meetings, uh, regarding fair and auditing and maybe go to other. you've got other people that request meetings uh regarding fair and auditing and maybe go to other elected officials to ask them not to place their agenda item as a request for a twenty-four hour notice versus one where it's just transparent. We need to stop suing ourselves and arguing. It's costly, not just in dollars, but in the brand of Bonner County, the way that we're behaving. And we need to address that issue as well as the dollars. This was a something we could have fixed. Um instead of tearing it up, we still have to have auditing done. Um and it is unfortunate that the behavior of the board is now that, okay, you're all your own people now that we're not talking about the RV campground. It's inconsistent. And so I would ask people to look to all of us, not just the board, to say, we want to be involved in a meaningful, respectful way. But the more that we do these twenty-four hour meetings, it makes it difficult. Um people do have to realize we have not just in state law, but we have an ordinance, and in our ordinance, we have a public comment section. And yes, we can say the state does not require us to give public comment, but our ordinance does, and therefore we do until we change that. And if we choose to not have the public comment segment, then we choose to change the ordinance. But it isn't that because the state says we don't have to. Of course, it's not a right, but we built it into our own because we felt the obligation to the community to represent them in this meeting. And I will also argue that this is the meeting where you're supposed to give us the information of what you'd like to see on our agendas. If you don't have the right to speak, then I don't know what you want to see on the agenda. I understand your point, and I think that you want it on the agenda item to make a decision. I think for me, it has to, we have to see what that legislation looks like so that we know that we're voting on the right thing once it gets here. But it's on my my list of things to do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh for clarity on the MOU, the MOU would count uh campgrounds or the fairgrounds. That was a notice of cancellation. It stays in effect for sixty days after notification, so it is still in effect for another fifty days, give or take a couple of days, which gives us time to all come to the board with the fair board, amend it, rewrite it, do whatever needs to be done, and continue on from there. So that's little clarity for y'all. Mr. Roman, how are you?
Never better. Uh question for Asia, uh Commissioner Williams, could you elaborate? You referenced being the being sued internally. Could you expand on that a little bit, please?
I did, I'm sorry. There is a suit uh regarding records release from the clerk's office to the fair board. Um I just saw that this morning, so I don't know the full depth of why there's a um suit for for records requests, but it's that seems to be uh unnecessary when it's our it's it's a county. So I have to look into more of that, why that exists, but it has to do with, it looks like a request for records um from a person who submitted it as an individual towards the fair board.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh actually, let me read from the suit, which people can find on iCourt, and it is case number CV zero nine dash twenty-three dash thirteen sixty-four. And I think it makes sense as to why or why not the MOU has been canceled. On August eighth, twenty twenty-three, the petitioner submitted a public records request to the fair board requesting the annual fair board's detailed statement of all monies received and expended in connection with the operation of any fair or fairs within ninety days after the holding of any such fair within the county. On August ninth, twenty twenty-three, petitioner submitted a second public records request to the fair board requesting a copy of all records of the fair board proceedings, business transactions, and true and proper account of all monies received by it and expended or on hand and proper vouchers evidencing all disbursement of money pursuant to Idaho Code twenty-two dash two zero four from two thousand ten through the present. Uh at the time of this filing, the fair board had yet to respond to that public records request. That is the challenge before both the clerk our internal and our external auditors. Uh Mr. Chairman, I would like us to get back to the order of the agenda if possible.
Okay, that's where we are going from here. We have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Rosedale. Court, item one.
Morning Commissioners, morning, everybody. Before you, I have fiscal year twenty-three claims batch number twenty-four in the amount of seven hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and forty-eight cents and demand batch number twenty-four in the amount of one hundred twenty-three thousand, nine hundred forty-three dollars and seventy-two cents totaling nine hundred fifteen thousand, six hundred forty-eight dollars and twenty cents for your program.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve payment of the fiscal year twenty-three claims and demands and batch number twenty-four totaling nine hundred fifteen thousand, six hundred forty-eight dollars, twenty cents.
I second the motion.
Roll call vote.
I want to, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
So how often are we paying finance charges on items? Because there's a few things in here we're paying finance charges. Is there an it an issue with us not getting the bills paid timely for an individual department?
Um you want to answer that?
Is there a uh specific offender?
Uh well, like we're Bonner, there's one that says Bonner County Daily B, and we're paying a finance charge.
Yeah, that's because it wasn't entered as a as a payment request by HR or for someone. And it's been sitting on the bills for like all of that. Oh, I. So they asked that we go ahead and get that taken into account, because they're not going to believe it.
Do we know what something like that's for?
Um I wasn't even here then. It's from like months months ago, ninety plus days. Yeah.
I think that's an opportunity for us to not to look at how much we can for finance items that we could pay outright. Because it makes it hard to track what is the finance charge for. But that's it. That was my question, is I saw finance charges. Thank you.
Oh, roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next, I have uh fiscal year twenty-three EMS batch number twenty-four in the amount of fifty-five thousand, nine hundred eighty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents and demand batch twenty-four in the amount of thirteen thousand, one hundred eighty-four dollars and eighty-four cents totaling sixty-nine thousand, one hundred seventy-four dollars and forty-three cents for your book.
I move to approve payment of the FY twenty-three EMS claims and demands in batch number twenty-four totaling sixty-nine thousand, one hundred seventy-four dollars and forty-three cents.
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
Anybody?
There's a question.
Okay, Doug, go ahead.
Yeah, um so the the uh EMS bills normally don't have much in the way of um of the um demands. Uh could you could you uh clarify what the demands are for me a bit?
Yeah, the entire amount is for building permits for next door.
Uh, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Doug. Hey. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Thank you, Commissioners. Lastly, before you, I have um we have the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund, which the Commissioners adopted last year, or they they approved the full amount. Last year, they they uh approved the first disbursement of one million eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred thirty-two dollars and fifteen cents. Uh it is in two tranches. This is an identical tranche. Uh you approved last year's, uh but you would need to approve this half as well. It's for the amount of one thou- one million eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred thirty-two dollars and fifteen cents. The benefit of this is it has a wide variety of uses. Um it can cover things like our uh due for covert. It can cover things like uh health insurance overage if we needed it to, or risk uh liability insurance kind of a thing. Um anyway, it's for your your decision to accept the second half or not.
Can I ask, when we, I was trying to understand on this EMS building, weren't we, didn't we pitch it as we were using ARPA funds for that?
Never. No, the art that is levy funds that we're using for the EMS building. ARPA funds were used to offset wages in Bonner County um employees, and it went specifically to those lines. It's been that way the entire time.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve acceptance of the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund allocations for Bonner County in the amount of one million eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred thirty-two dollars, fifteen cents for fiscal year twenty-two and one million eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred thirty-two dollars, fifteen cents for fiscal year twenty-three, and authorize the clerk to submit for the second tranche of one million eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred thirty-two dollars, fifteen cents for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
I second the motion.
Uh public comment? Okay, roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, public defender. How are you today?
Commissioner, how are you?
Good.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Luke Kegelberg, Public Defender's Office. I was last before this board several months ago, asking for the board's permission to submit our annual application uh to the PDC, the Public Defense Commission, to receive grant funding for our office. The board agreed, the application was submitted, and we have received our grant funding. In total, it is just under four hundred thousand dollars. At this time, as a term of the funding, we are required to sign what is called a grant agreement. Really just a promise to spend the money as outlined in the application. So the money's going to go towards things like attorney salaries, expert witnesses, things that benefit our clients as opposed to things like pizza parties for the office. So I'm just asking the board to sign that agreement at this time.
All right.
Thank you.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve and sign the FY two zero two for Indigent Defense Financial Assistance Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
All right, that'll be resolution number sixty twenty twenty-three.
That's the next one.
Oh, that's the next one. That's prosecutor. I get you guys mixed up. You're the other side.
We're the bad ones.
You're on the other side of it. Yeah. So, all right, roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. William.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, good morning Commissioners and public. I'm Bill Wilson with the Prosecutor's Office. The item that I have before you today is a resolution to move funds from our contingency fund to our civil litigation fund. This is for the uninitiated, something that we typically do in the last one or two months of the budget year. If we have had overruns in our civil litigation costs, um this is, I think, something we've had to do consistently since we began our self-insured retention program. The amount of the funds being requested is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and that is to um the the purpose of the transfer is to essentially pay uh legal fees for outside counsel and other professional services that we accrue over the course of the year. And uh I'm asking the the board to approve that resolution so we can continue to fund um and pay those bills.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-seven authorizing the clerk to open the Justice Civil Lit Budget and Decrease Line Item zero three four one two dash seven eight six zero, Justice Statutory Five Percent Reserve by one hundred twenty thousand dollars, and Increase Line Item zero three four seven one dash seven one zero zero, Professional Services Legal in the Amount of one hundred twenty thousand dollars.
I second the motion.
Roll call vote. Public comment? Nobody wants to.
You've got Mr. Lady.
Mr. Lee, you want to give us the hundred and twenty thousand? He doesn't have to move it, or you got something cool?
I'm just curious, uh what was the reason for the overruns? Thank you.
Um I think there's a there's a a large swath of things. So we have outside counsel, several different attorneys that we use, different issues um that come up, and to pinpoint one thing would probably be very difficult. Um when we budget for this item, um we kind of do so uh knowing that it's inherently kind of volatile. And we are optimistic when we budget, hoping that we don't have to spend as much um so that we don't have to freeze those funds and and not be able to devote them to other projects, but um our practice has typically been that we have some uh transfer at the end of the year from our contingency fund to our civ lit. It just is, it's very variable. This year it's one twenty. I think in past years, it's been more than that. Nancy has said that it has been more, so um this is is less than it has been in years past.
And so the overruns happen every year?
I'm sorry?
The overruns happen every year?
Uh thus far, they have. Um but like I said, sometimes it's been less or more. Um if we were uh to go off the self-insured model and go on to the first dollar insurance, um it might actually decrease the volatility. We might have higher premiums at the start of the year, but we would have more certainty of knowing how much we would pay.
Thank you.
Tradeoff.
Ms. Crank.
Um I have a question. Jennifer Kramer for Thirkin. So i- if this is a uh re- uh repetitious overrun, seems to be consistent year after year. I guess, is there something in Asia? I know you talk about risk management. Is there something we can do to limit the litigation? Look at why are we in so many lawsuits? I mean, what's causing the litigation in the first place? And can we address that so that we're not spending so much money?
That is a much bigger topic than I think I'm prepared to discuss this morning.
Yeah.
Uh suffice it to say that suffice it to say that that this is, I think, I could be wrong, but are probably our most volatile and uncertain fund. Uh many things that we budget for, like the A budget in the clerk's office, we have, we know what that will be, right? Because we can, we can say what those, what the salaries will be. Um but this is the type of fund where we're just, we can't predict um how much or little litigation we'll have. Obviously, we're always trying to do less, or at least I am. Um but sometimes, I mean, maybe that's wishful thinking, but we always try to budget optimistically so that we're not tying these funds up um when they could be used for other purposes throughout the budget year.
But perhaps there's a pattern, you know? Maybe we can look at a pattern of we're constantly sued for A, B, and C, or I don't know. I just don't.
I think that that's part of the assessment that I'm working on with risk is where are our exposures and potential leakage? Because it's difficult, and in their case, and to their credit, they didn't withhold that dollar amount from being used. It was in the contingency, and they're putting forth what has to be spent. But you're right, it does allow us the the benefit of hindsight to look at what were those costs that overran? And how can we try to mitigate those costs so that it's not so much of an unknown, so that we could know as much as we need to, as we can, best ways of the money going out. But in this case, we haven't been auditing. We just essentially slide it over. I think the practice of going back and looking at how we're budgeting and what we're spending is what Bonner County um is missing, because we're not really future forecasting our money. We're just saying we're going to spend it once we say we need it. But I think that that's a hard question for his office to answer. They just know that they need the money because there's so many different buckets. So it wouldn't be as easy as saying this particular bucket was underfunded because it's going to cost multiple areas in their department. That is, that's underfunded. But I think there's an opportunity for growth and correction on the contingency use.
And the civil litigation fund itself has um has been something, like I said, it is volatile, but there are line items in it um that I think I'm actively looking at this and looking for ways to improve and trying to find ways that we can um if not limit funds or limit limit costs, at least try to identify the line items in the civil litigation fund and be and honor those more. Try to um instead of drawing down portions of it um for items that weren't originally budgeted that way, like there, we definitely want to look at this and try to improve the process.
And if it's a recurring, making it part of the budget versus.
Sure.
It.
Of course, the one thing too is that our our civil, our contingency is is four hundred thousand dollars, right? So that doesn't have to go just to this. Um you might think on the one hand that it's it's a good idea to to be optimistic about this so that we don't overfund it accidentally, and then knowing we can move civil funds um over from the contingency. That also, though, is a risk, because if we have another sort of emergency, right, that we need to use those funds for, we could be down. And and then we go into other things that we really don't want to do, like tax anticipation notes and other stuff. So um it's a balancing act, is what it is.
Yeah. Because you only get to set your budget once a year.
Right. So just curious, uh what was it? A hundred eighty thousand? One twenty. Oh, one twenty, I'm sorry. Yes. Uh what we're say like the top two? Um the top two, you mean like as costs for the over the course of the year? Hundred and twenty, what would say the top couple of things? Um well, it's not, again, it's I would say the cost as a. I would say the cost of, as a whole, over the course of the years that spent it down, it, it's outside litigation costs, um, we have di- different cases that, um. We have different attorneys that we use, um. And we have those costs, those numbers, um, some of them are, um. Well, I mean, I, we could provide you that documentation, I think that, um.
I mean, there's none that like stand out as like exceptionally high, or there's not one particular one.
Well, we did have, we did have, um. One employment law case, um, that was, was very expensive, and we spent a lot of money on that. Um, we also have continuing lit- an ongoing litigation with, with an employee in the organization, and that's costing money as well. Um, but, uh, there's a lot of different, uh, drips that go into that bucket.
So it sounds like get, us getting sued by the former employees or current employees, it's kind of a.
Yeah.
Top spender there?
Employee personnel li- litigation, um, employment litigation is, is like the ban of, of public sector work, um, that happens a lot.
Yeah, I think that's what you were trying to address.
Significant amount of leakage in that area.
Thank you.
Good morning, Trish.
Good morning. Is there an uptick in lawsuits against the county this year?
I don't know about an uptick, we've been getting sued a lot in years past, so if we're looking for those, you know, the me- the, the comparison is probably the same, um. It's not always an, an issue of numbers, but intensity can also be just as, um, you know, can be the reason for the, the cost overruns. Um. Like I said, w- we just have no way of knowing how many we're gonna get, so it's really hard to compare apples to.
There a particular firm that gets majority of this money, especially for this year, and if some new name referred?
Well, um, the, are the employment law case on which we spent the most money was, um, handled by Davelier. Um, but we also have coun- counsel from, from Boise, um, and other places that are, are working on, on our behalf.
What would you say, since you've been at the county historically, does Davelier get the majority of the money?
I can't say, I, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Rick Kramer for the record, I'd like to ask, was any county money used to defend Steve Bradshaw in his latest debacle?
No.
Okay, thank you.
That it?
I'm not asking questions.
Okay. Roll call vote. Oh, okay. Uh, Jim, you still got your hand up?
Yeah, I was just gonna wonder, uh, when it comes to defending, uh, county employees against, uh, um, litigation. Are there certain county employees that are having to be defended more often? Who's, who's taking them, who's having to be defended, I guess is what we're asking, you don't have to name names, but offices perhaps?
Uh, I'm not gonna name.
Sure, well, what I meant by, when we, when we have litigation with employees, it's, it's not defending those employees such as, so much as being. Challenged by them, previous, previous employees, but I, I just can't speak to any. Um, anything that's related to personnel or open litigation, that's true, something that I typically don't wanna discuss publicly, so.
Sure, I was just curious if it was like the sheriff's office is being defended, or the county commissioner's office, or. Prosecutor's office, or wh- where is this money having to go to, I guess, but that's okay, thank you.
I think maybe there's a little clarification, uh, when there is a suit that comes into the county. It's not always that the prosecutor's office can manage it, and so they have to send it out to outside counsel depending on it. And sometimes that's what you're seeing in, with respect to the employment law. Case that, uh, he's referencing, we spent a significant amount on a third-party attorney because of the claim itself. Um, and sometimes that's by the direction of a board, um, and sometimes the, the prosecutor says that they can manage it. So I think that's one we're asking for that public records would probably be a better answer, because he didn't come prepared with that. But that's sometimes how we get outside counsel, um, some people wanna hold outside counsel on retainer, um. And they ask the board to do things of that nature, but it doesn't mean that the county is actually paid. I think there is room to assess who it is that Bonner County is using as outside counsel and the dollar amount per hour. Cause some of the bills come in really, really high, I think in the employment law one, which is public record, we're over six hundred thousand dollars. You also have to remember Bonner County is also self-insured with a very high deductible, so a five hundred thousand dollar deductible. Doesn't do much when the bill's just a little bit above that, it's us paying it, and so there's a lot of things that impact. What we're paying, and it requires us to look at, why do we keep circling the same thing?
Like I said, one big factor here is the, the decision to be self-insured versus a first dollar insurance model. That goes to the deductible essentially, um, first dollar insurance is a pr- the premium we pay at the beginning of the year, you would expect to be higher. Because of the fact that that insurer is taking on more of our financial responsibility. Um, but then, you know, on the other hand, then we don't have to pay these higher deductibles, and so. There is some benefit to, even though it's an increased cost, the certainty that can come with a first dollar insurance model. And so I think we, it's a continual, it's just a discussion we continue to have as to whether, which model works best for us.
First dollar insurance, is that just simply a no deductible? Is that, I, I'm not familiar with that.
It's not no deductible, um, that's there, that's, it's, um, say for example, I think I crimp, when I crimp. If we were a member of I crimp and we had an employment law claim, I don't know what their deductible is for that, it's like maybe. Twenty thousand, I think, is twen- it's twenty, so much, much different than our half million dollar policy now, right?
It's still in, you're still buying an insurance policy, but part of what you're exchanging is the uncertainty that exists within the market as well as in your climate. And so in order to do your best assessment of what's the right insurance for Bonner County. We have to first address some of the things that make us unattractive to, to insurance, because you're, I'm selling you my risk. And so they wanna see that we are doing our own mitigation of risks, and that is a goal of mine for this next coming year is to improve that. So we can have the best option, as well as one of the things that some of the first dollars offer is more resources to your. Agency than we currently have.
Okay, uh, we're gonna get back to the agenda item and go ahead and call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, HR, item one, thank you Bill.
Good morning Commissioners, Alicia Clark, H R for the record. Um, the first item we have is regarding policy twenty-five hundred tuition reimbursement. Bonner County Human Resources Office is seeking approval to change the tuition reimbursement policy section limits. This change will bring the policy into IRS regulations by stating that reimbursement is on a calendar year, not fiscal. This change also removes the wording during the course of employment and changes it to. The maximum reimbursement during the calendar year.
Thank you for the workshop, it was helpful with the redline versions.
Please send the information before us and make a motion to approve the change to policy twenty-five hundred tuition reimbursement.
Mister Chairman, I second the motion.
Public comment? All right, roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item two.
Okay, the second one I have is, um, Bonner County is requesting the approval. Moving forward with the Pacific Source Third Party Administrative Service Agreement, beginning October twenty-three. Um, there's minimal changes, the main ones were just updating contacts. And legal has, uh, looked it over, and it's pretty benign as far as changes.
Mister Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to adopt the revision to the Third Party Administrative Service Agreement effective October twenty-twenty-three.
I second the motion.
Public comment? Roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Thank you.
EMS, Jeff Lindsey.
I'm here.
There you are, go ahead.
Good morning Commissioners, Jeff Lindsey, EMS chief for the record, um, before us is a memorandum. Um, for, let's see, billing revenue exceeded the twenty-twenty-three budget projections by a hundred and eight thousand. Um, this resolution is to enable those funds to be brought into the F Y twenty-three B budget to cover expenses.
Please send the information provided, I move to approve resolution twenty-three sixty-eight for unscheduled revenue placing one hundred and eight thousand dollars. In the budget ending seven eight six zero miscellaneous expenses.
Mister Chairman, I second the motion.
Public comment? Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, B O C C.
I was asked to present this, Mister Chairman. Lake Pondre School District. Number eighty-four is requesting an L two certification extension request to September eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three. This will allow for the calculation of average daily attendance for the purpose of a potential levy request. This is somewhat similar to the request that we received last week from, I believe it was Lakeland School District. And, uh, it is my understanding from Clerk Rosedale that this is a semi-annual event. Mister Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the Lake Pondre School District number eighty-four, L two certification extension request.
So my problem is kind of the same thing on the last one, um. Is, are they wanting to use just the peak days of attendance? Is that what this one is, when you say it's similar to the last one?
I, sorry. Um, they.
Name for director.
Just a second. So the school districts don't have any, like. They have their, um, enrollment information, but they don't, this week is when the state, they'll report their attendance this week. That the state, and that'll set their, um. Like how much money they'll receive this semester. So they don't know what their numbers are gonna be until they finish the season. It's fairly normal for them to do this.
Is this the same one that was next week, and you're just giving them an additional extension?
Cause we're. So they're due the eighth. The L twos are due to the clerk's office on the eighth. And they won't have their, so it doesn't really affect. What, what the clerk's office does with the L twos, but it will affect how, like their levy.
Right, okay.
Because it'll determine how much income they're gonna receive from the state.
Okay, thank you, that's the answer, yeah.
I'll end, hang motion.
Uh. There is a motion, but, but we're looking for, there was a second.
Yes.
Okay, roll call vote.
Yes.
I'm gonna abstain, because on the last vote, I, this, I think this is a continuation, it's just saying where the due date is. I don't think it's right to use the highest three days, um. Because that does impact the levy, and if we're only giving the highest three days, it's not, uh. I guess fair is a good word to the homeowner, so you use the highest three days only. Cause I think this is just when they actually certify the highest three days.
Yes. So I wanna thank everybody for attending and behaving, and I thought the meeting went exceptionally well, I commend each and every one of you. And it is ten oh two, and we will adjourn this meeting, there is no executive session today, so. Y'all have a wonderful day, enjoy the cool weather.